Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Vlad?
Here. Thank you. Well, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you'd please remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Karen Peace of the Baha'i Faith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the May 31, 2018 Budget Development Meeting, June 7, 2018 Clarification Meeting, and the regular City Council Meeting at June 12, 2018, regular cities Bennett County School District Number 25 Meeting, and Study Session, and Budget Development Meetings of June 14, 2018. B, Payroll and Material Claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of June 2018. Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening. Ashley Welsh, Senior Accountant. Tonight I'm presenting the Payroll and Material Claims Report for June of 2018. Total payroll and material claims for the month were $7,855,137, and payroll-related claims were $5,166,861. We had a change of minus two full-time employees, 14 part-time employees, and two seasonal employees, or a total increase of filled positions for the month of 14, and a total employee count of 783. Vendor claims for the month were $2,688,276, and I'll go over a few of the large vendor claims. We paid $499,911 to Jackson Group Peterbilt for automated trucks for sanitation, $126,788 to Bennett County Clerk for the FY-18 magistrate court fees. We paid $126,000 to RSCI for WPC phosphorus design, and $113,741 to DL Beck for the Port of Greenway from Park Bureau to Montevista. The remaining large vendor claims explain 87.04 percent of all the vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I've given you information on our June purchase card activity. For the month of June, we had 1,495 transactions, which amounted to $361,732. We have a total of 242 cardholders, and 170 of them used their cards in the month of June. We had eight purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review below. This completes my report.
Any questions for Ashley? Thank you, Ashley.
Okay. And then we also have the Treasures Report for the month of May, 2018. Total cash and cash equivalents of city monies totaled $41,435,534. Total long-term investments were $4,673,29, for a total of $46,42,862. This amount is down $1,875,422 for the month of May. And on page two of the report, we've highlighted some key receipts for the month. Transit Rural Fund received a grant for $47,363. That was for March 2018 operations. We received cable franchise fees for $50,349, which were down 12.74 percent over the previous year. The airport received a grant for $61,539. The Transit Urban Fund received $79,604 for federal grants for the month of April. And we also received franchise fees from Intermountain Gas for $154,652, which was down about 17 percent. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. Page three of the report is for the trust funds. We can see that cash and cash equivalents were $1,083,441. Long-term investments, $4,271,937. For a total, cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $5,355,378. The trust funds had total cash receipts for the month of $32,275. Cash disbursements were $54,843. And the net change in long-term investments was $1,206, for an overall decrease in the trust funds of $23,774. The next page shows a list of all the funds' cash balances with their respective net change for the month. And we just highlight the General Fund, shows that the General Fund went down by $972,60 for the month of May. And then page five is Discussion and Analysis for Your Review. And the last page shows a five-year trend of cash balances, and this report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the city. We'll just go over the negative funds. Transit Urban Fund is negative $95,485, which will be taken care of with grants. The Fund 59 Debt Service Fund, negative $28,911, which will be taken care of with future tax remittance money. And the Fund 81 CDBG is negative $21,365, which will be taken care of with grant money. Any questions?
That's it. Thank you, Ashley. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda C, Historic Preservation Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Nick Nielsen to continue his service as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Nielsen's term will begin July 3, 2018, and will expire July 3, 2021. D, Housing Alliance and Community Partnership Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the Mayor's reappointment of Katrina Mason-Rorris to continue her service as a member of the House Alliance and Community Partnership Board of Directors. Ms. Rorris's term will begin July 2, 2018, and will expire July 2, 2023. E, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Angelo to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, replacing Doug Milder, whose term expired. Mr. Angelo's term will begin July 6, 2018, and will expire July 6, 2020. F, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the Mayor's reappointment of Frederick Belzer to continue his service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Belzer's term will begin July 8, 2018, and will expire July 8, 2020. Agenda Item G has been pulled from the agenda, and so we will not here discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclaimations. We do not have any proclaimations, but we do have one scout in the audience. Would you stand up and introduce yourself?
I'm Brock, and I'm a scout here at City of Miami, says, and shepherds commanding.
Brock, you know what troop you're in?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty. Thank you for being here. Who have you got with you? Let's embarrass your sister too, should we?
My sister.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On July 12, at 9:00 a.m. will be a City Council Study Session. July 19 at 1:00 p.m. will be a Study Session Clarification Working Lunch. July 19 at 5:30 p.m. will be a Council Clarification Meeting. July 19, 6:00 p.m. regular City Council Meeting. Other events happening, Ross Park Band Concerts on Sunday evenings from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the month of July. July 6 through the 13th, Southeast Idaho Senior Games. July 14 will be Quin Metals Cruise Fun Run. July 19 through the 26th, July 19 and the 26th, Splash Dance at Ross Park Aquatics Complex for ages, for youth ages 12 to 17, and that will run from 8:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. The Open Burn Band in Wildland Urban Interface Areas continues. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Six, is a Public Hearing, reconsideration of Hearing Examiner's Decision 533 East Clark Street. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding a request from Airgas USA for a second electronic message display at 533 East Clark Street. Municipal Code 15.20.250E allows one such sign per business. The request was denied by the Hearing Examiner after the May 200, or May 24, 2018 Public I declare the public hearing opened as soon as I can get to the gap. How's this gonna work out? That's what we were thinking here. So I would just, do I need to find out if there's been any ex parte contact here? I don't do it.
It's an application.
It's an application. Does there been any ex parte communications?
You guys are.
All right. Doesn't look like it. So with that, we will go ahead, thank you. We will go ahead and turn the time over to the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Johnson. I'm a blaze sign, I'm a graphic designer here in Pocatello, and I'm representing Airgas What we've handed you, I'm just gonna kind of go through a few things, but first, I'd like to start saying that Airgas has been in town for years, and I've lived here all my life, and I didn't realize that you could get more there than just bottled gases, settling oxygen. I had no clue. But I find out that they have welding helmets, they have safety gear, they have first aid kits, eye protection, fire equipment. They've got a host of products for the community. And I think that they need to be able to efficiently communicate that with the, with the community, and we feel that the digital sign is kind of one of their best options. Right now, they've just got signage as banners tapped along the side of the building, and the building is set back in such a way that as you glance off to attempt to read these banners, you know, it's not efficient for either the passerby or for Airgas. Majority of the time when we do these reader board signs, they're double-sided, so that traffic from both ways can see these, these signs. Well, we feel that Airgas is in a unique position because they are on the corner of two one-way streets. I've only found one other block in the city with that same setup, the one-way streets. I think I have a, an overhead map of that as well. But Airgas is unique in the fact that they sit 45 feet off of the sidewalk. Their building sits 45 feet away. You cannot see this building as you drive up Fifth until you're almost right on it. How are you going to read these banners, you know, as you're trying to watch in front of it? So I've taken a couple videos just from the perspective of the car coming down both Clark and up Fifth. And, just play. Yeah. And I'm hoping there's not audio because we're not movie production. So this is your coming down Clark, passing the courthouse. That is your view of Airgas. Can you even tell where it is? It's off to the left on this corner. There is one of the banners that they've got on the sign. So the Stucco Building that you see, the little white square in the center, that's, that's the one sign. That's where we're going ahead and putting the one that they've got the okay to hang. But, and that, we were lucky that we got to stop and actually see that. Now we're just cruising on by. You can kind of see that Airgas was there if you take your eye off the road. This is the same thing again, and I've got another one coming up Fifth Street. How do I get to that?
Are you the one driving?
No. He was driving. I know. He was driving.
Curious enough.
You tell him the next time. Bye. I am sitting in the car. Yeah, okay. So now we're coming up Fifth Street. Oh, here's that audio. He was telling me, sorry. Fifth. Intersection is there. All right, we're just a block away from it now. I have this sort of glimpse of a sign that's really off to the side of the lights, if you notice that. Can you see there on the left? That's Airgas. That's the only way that you know that this store is even there. And luckily, we've got to stop, so, but we can't read any of their banners. They're displayed along the side of the building. Barely catch a glimpse. All I get is the one sign. And if we stop long enough, maybe I'll have a chance to read all those. So that's why we feel that they're in a unique situation. I mean, yes, there's others, other, sorry. Yes, there are other businesses on one-way streets. This one, just because of the direction of traffic and the corner that they end up on, you just don't have a chance to really see that building until you're right upon it. In the little handhouse that we give you, I have, again, that view on Pages One and Two of Airgas as you're coming up the road. I've circled it to help you pick it out. And on page two is where it sits in relationship to the, the traffic signal, the lights right Page three, just is an overhead view of how Airgas sits back from Fifth Street, and you feel notice next to that blue marker that I've written in there, or drawn in there, there's a fence before you come to it. So really, you are right upon it before you have a chance to look over and, and view the building. Page four is the other block that I found in Pocatello that's kind of in the same situation as far as one-way streets and buildings on those corners. The one that I put an X on was the furthest building that I could find that sat back deeper into the block as Airgas does. It only sits 14 feet away from the sidewalk. Airgas is again 45 feet away. Next page, you know, we had mentioned that Walgreens, and that may have been the only one that we mentioned, that they have a sign kind of in a similar position to the, the traffic signals. And, and I just got word back today that, yes, it is, but it's set a little bit further back. The sign is a little bit tall. We're willing to make some adjustments to this if we can. If we can angle it different, if we can lower it. I don't know how much further back it can be set and still be visible, but we're willing to, you know, do what we need to just to get the opportunity to, for, for these guys to have this advertisement. You see that Big Dog, I believe the height is very similar in that one, and there it sits in front of a traffic light. There's again Walgreens and Key Bank on the, the following page. The last page is an example of a monument sign that's here in town that also sits on the corner. It is behind the light where Airgas sits in front of it, but it is at a slight angle and it's lower. It's a monument sign, and that's something that they would consider doing if we could just, you know, set something out there for them. So we feel that there's been a precedent set as far as allowing this kind of signage on a corner closer to the, the signal lights, but we're willing to, you know, make, make adjustments. That's all I've got.
Questions, council?
I have a question. Part of the request is for two electronic signs, right? And these examples that you gave us are near a stoplight, but they don't have two electronic reader boards, is that correct?
It was my understanding that they agreed we could have one. And that, as you came down Clark and could see Airgas off to the left, we're gonna put it on their side of the building, but you just barely catch a glimpse of it in between the trees as you're heading down Clark. Generally, like I said, generally, they're double-sided signs, so we just want to take what would be the back of that sign and put it facing Fifth. You know, when we, when we apply for these LED boards on a pole sign, usually they have the two sides. So, but we just apply for one sign. But we wanted to make it clear when we were applying for this sign that we wanted to separate the back and the front, put them in different locations, basically, so that they face the traffic that was coming through.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steph?
My name is Terry Nguyen, Assistant Planner for the City of Pocatello. The subject site of this reconsideration request is located at 533 East Clark Street at the intersection of North Fifth and East Clark. These are two highly traveled one-way streets. The area is flat, fully developed, and utilized for business purposes. The applicant is requesting two electronic message displays that are 30 square feet each. Municipal Code 15.20.250 allows one electronic message display per business. Due to the fact that one of the electronic message displays is proposed to be installed on the existing pole, staff solicited opinions from Corey Krantz, Traffic Engineer at Idaho Transportation Department, Brian Poole, who's an engineer at Idaho Transportation Department, and Mike Neville, City of Pocatello Traffic Operations Supervisor. They have expressed concern that the sign is too close to the traffic signal. The sign, the concern is the sign may detract from the signal clarity and will put the traveling public at risk. The applicant stated in their application that this sign is similar to the Walgreens sign at Yellowstone and Alameda. In an email, Mr. Krantz at ITD advised that they are not similar. The Airgas sign sits at the back of the sidewalk, whereas the Walgreens sign sits approximately 10 feet from the back of the sidewalk. Thus, they are not similar. This can be seen in the photos that has, have been presented to you at pre-agenda. Mr. Krantz also indicates that the Airgas sign is in what he called an influence zone of the signal. Signals require redundant systems, and no impact shall be made to degrade, hinder, or obstruct the device. As you can see in the photos in Mr. Krantz's email, the sign has the potential to block out one of the signals. This concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Some of the other examples that we've been given here, the monument sign, the Big Dog sign, did ITD have comments about those and whether they're similar?
He did not mention it. He just mentioned the Walgreens sign because that was mentioned in their application when I sent it to them.
So we don't know how they felt about the other ones? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Terry, how does the signage that's proposed compare with the existing signs in size?
The size, very similar. The Airgas sign now, I think it might be, I think there might ask, might be asking a little bit more signage, but not much, and they're well below what is on that code. So at this point, the only permanent signs they have is the pole sign and then the one above the door that's on Clark Street, that, to be honest, serves no purpose other than identifying the front door of the business, because nobody's going to be traveling south on Fifth to see it, and it's too far away from Fourth to see either, so.
Does, does the proposed building sign, the one on the building, does it match the size of the banner that's there currently?
The angle of the two sides, do you interpret that as two sides, signs, or one sign, Terry?
Typically, when they are on a pole, we just consider it one sign because we, the way we do our sign permits, if somebody is seeking a sign permit for a pole sign and it's on a two-way street, we don't calculate the percent, or the equation of the, the amount of signage that they have by two. We don't, we don't multiply it. It's like, okay, if they have a 50-square-foot sign, we don't permit a 100-square-foot sign. It's just 50 square feet.
Any other questions, council? Okay. Thank you, Terry. Oh, Terry, has there been any other correspondence other than the emails that you gave us earlier? Okay, thank you. And have we had any in the?
No.
Okay, thank you. And we will move to ask for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application?
I'm Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone Chubbick. I'm opposed to the application because of, one, the light pollution, as well as the radiation exposure, and that they are distractions. I don't like any of the electric signs. I think they've really made a clutter of the cities, and especially along Main Thoroughfares. They're very distracting, especially if they have anything moving on there. And I agree, they're very hard to see. You don't know that business is there, and they are good business. They've been there a long time. They should have some way to be able to advertise that closer, that's a visible sign. But I'm opposed to any electronic sign for that reason, and if they're asking for two, you need to stick to your code of one, so that we have a uniform in all, in production in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, you would have an opportunity to rebut anything that, or say anything else real quick. Okay, then, council, I declare the public hearing closed. As items before you, Hadiyah was to proceed.
Mayor, I feel most comfortable going by what our ordinance says, which only provides for one sign and not two, so I would move to uphold the Hearing Examiner's decision. Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Manon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion passes. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven is the Short Platte L&amp;B Subdivision. Brad Fraser, represented by Daniel Long of Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a short platte to subdivide 0.88 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The subdivision is located-
The design will be found, the design will be funded with the fiscal year 2018 reserves and the purchase amount has been included in the IT Department fiscal year 2019 budget request.
Mr. Mast?
Counsel, I'm in.
I move we approve City Source Service Request Manager App Platform Agreement for the IT Department and authorize the mayor's signature on all contract documents related to the purchase. Second.
We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 9, Ground Lease Agreement Kenneth C. Swisher. Council may wish to consider a ground lease agreement with Kenneth C. Swisher to allow for the city to continue use of approximately 210 square feet of land owned by Mr. Swisher, which is located adjacent to the southeast portion of Taysom Rotary Park. This area has traditionally and is currently being used as part of the park's entrance, parking area, and associated fencing and landscaping.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, I move agenda item number 9, the ground lease agreement with Kenneth Swisher.
Second.
We've got a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurik. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 9, Ground Lease Agreement Kenneth C. Swisher. Council may wish to consider a ground lease agreement with Kenneth C. Swisher to allow for the city to continue use of approximately 210 square feet of land owned by Mr. Swisher, which is located adjacent to the southeast portion of Taysom Rotary Park. This area has traditionally and is currently being used as part of the park's entrance, parking area, and associated fencing and landscaping.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, I move agenda item number 9, the ground lease agreement with Kenneth Swisher.
Second.
We've got a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurik. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you proceed, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Swisher for doing this.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got preoccupied. What did you say?
I'd like to thank Mr. Swisher for doing this for the city.
Oh, yeah. I would agree. Thank you. All right, agenda item 10, Piggyback Purchase of a 2018 Henderson Brine Maker, Street Operation Department. Council may wish to consider authorizing the piggyback purchase of a 2018 Henderson Brine Extreme Infiniti Brine Maker and authorize the mayor's signature on all on all contract documents related to the purchase. Metro Quik Incorporated has agreed to allow the Street Operation to piggyback the National Joint Powers Alliance Sourcewell Contract Number 080114, HIP in the amount of $57,425. The amount has been budgeted in the Street Operation Department fiscal year 2018 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize you to sign and that we go ahead and purchase this brine machine.
Second.
Thank you.
How about two seconds?
That was perfect. That was perfect. We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon? Yes.
I also hope, yes.
Yes, we just get to thank you too. I'm kidding.
Adamson would like her vote registered. Yes, thank you. Agenda item 11. It has been a long day. Agenda item 11, City Source Service Request Manager App Platform Agreement Information Technology, IT. Council may wish to approve a contract with City Source for a city service request manager app platform and authorize the mayor's signature on all contract documents related to the purchase. This project was presented at to the council at the May 10, 2018 study session. The design will be found, the design will be funded with the fiscal year 2018 reserves and the purchase amount has been included in the IT Department fiscal year 2019 budget request.
Mr. Mast?
Counsel, I'm in.
I move we approve City Source Service Request Manager App Platform Agreement for the IT Department and authorize the mayor's signature on all contract documents related to the purchase. Second.
We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside due to discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is three minutes time limit per person and 15 minutes for this agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Happy Independence. Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone. The Declaration of Independence states in the second paragraph, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of those ends, these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing the powers in such form as to themselves seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." We did just celebrate Independence Day. We now at the city and county level live under U.N. International Code in Development, Construction, Trades, and Energy, and in Pocatello's childcare. That's putting a foreign power over U.S. citizens, including minors, and our energy and business trade, which is an act of treason in violation of our Constitution. Article number four, States, Section four, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." That means government by we, the people, by the voice of we, the people, for the good of the whole. We're not a democracy, that's socialism. And so I would like to reinforce that among this city council, as well as those in the residents here, as well as in our Boise government. We continually are giving money to nonprofit organizations or other private entity. We get money from foreign nations, including communist Islamic nations, which violates our national security as well as our Constitution. We now are living under militarized police who do arrest and seize property and people without cause, which is a violation of our Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights. I witnessed that this last weekend. Article six states, "The Constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States," meaning all of us, we, the people, "shall be the supreme law of the land. No other law trumps the Constitution, not state code, not city ordinance, not U.N. International Code." And so we are under siege in this land. We have rampant drugs. We have abuse, our jails are full of youth, youth addicted to alcohol and drugs who are stealing to fund those addictions. Many of them are there under false charges as well. We have rampant suicide. We have rampant foreclosure. There was at least 20 foreclosure notices at the county about two weeks ago. And these are of the poor who live south of town in the trailers who can't afford any more.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hold you accountable.
We will go ahead and move on.
As our public servants paid public.
Nikki, thank you. I'm gonna have to have her removed.
I have a right to speak this character.
Go ahead.
I will not be removed. Obey the law.
Just go ahead and have her removed. Thank you very much. Not gonna miss out on a whole lot tonight because the meeting is, the last discussion item is number 12. Counsel, I'm in a predicament is what I'm in, counsel. And I'm gonna ask you, we've got one that came in 15 minutes late, says we're supposed to to be here at the beginning of the meeting to sign up. Would you like to hear from her or they can always come back in two weeks?
I'm fine with hearing it.
Okay. Okay, Cara Lee Jax.
Some of us work, so we can't always make it right here. Ms. Carol Jax, 663 Franklin Avenue. I'll make this short as I have three minutes to address a very complex issue that should have been added to the agenda, discussed at length, and packed community input.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm rolling. Pocatello has codes for how its citizens must keep their yards, which are illogically listed under the nuisance section. To my way of thinking, if it's a nuisance, you reach inside yourself and address why it bothers you and go on with your life. If it's a public health and safety issue, you legislate it. These codes are a reflection of our community standards. I understand the desire to set limits of acceptability. No one wants to live next door to the extreme quarter. The question is, how do we legislate to extremes without limiting individuality? My grass is long and wavy. I like it that way. I'll be adding some wildflower seeds this winter, but already the finches are enjoying the grass seed. When I was contacted by code enforcement, I invited Maria to come to my house and talk about it. We discussed my pastoral landscape, and she deemed it a grassy area. I asked, what makes it a grassy area? She said, everyone would consider that a grassy area. Well, obviously, I don't. Herein lies the problem. With our codes, they're being interpreted on the spot. They're arbitrarily enforced. I've been told, no, they're not arbitrarily enforced. Any homeowner would be approached like this. That's the problem. All homeowners are approached in arbitrary fashion. They're told things like, they must have grass. It's not the code. They cannot park the vehicles on areas that they have cleared for that purpose because it's a grassy area. Everyone can see that. It's a grassy area. In closing, I'd like to request that the codes be put on the agenda and the process begin to clarify and adjust the codes to reflect environmental concerns that have become a greater concern than whether your neighbor's lawn is taller than six inches. Perhaps we could also address restricting new linden trees as they're associated with bee desks due to their overwhelming floral scent. Maybe we can, maybe we can be a community that values the finches that eat the grass seed and the bees whose survival are linked so closely to our own over the feeling of orderly comfort that you get when you drive by our neighbors' manicured lawns.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, counsel, thank you very much for your work today. It was a very long day, there's no question. We appreciate your work and you being here. With that, we are adjourned.